She is on right now.
Huh?
The clerk is on right now.
Yeah, I don't know if he got it or not, but he took all the stuff up there. But he should be, you know, he do a lot of volunteer work and stuff for the, for the recreation department. So I was recommending him for the, uh, for the park and recreation commission.
Sounds good.
Okay. So you, 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 you know, I don't know if everybody know, know his background and stuff. Which you want to do wait, uh, did you want me to make the recommendation?
Well, I think that, um, you know, I don't know if everybody, it'll be the consensus of the group. I don't know if everybody know of or had a chance to go through the information. But, uh, I'm fine with that, especially if he's been serving in other capacities already.
Yeah. I see, and I'm gonna ask her. Did she get, did she get, get his stuff up there? I don't think she probably been back in office. I think she at home, right?
Oh, she's here. There she is.
Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
You, uh, did you get Walter Johnson's, uh, info?
Uh, yes, if he turned it in today. I had doctor's appointments today. If you, uh, guys, if you would have sent your emails. So I've been at doctor's appointments all day today. So, um,
He took it up.
Okay, if he up there then get line to have it.
Okay.
All right, look like the only person that we missed is Councilwoman Washington. I don't know.
She just texted, yeah, she just texted said she'll be a little late.
Okay, then. All right, well, good evening, everybody. This brings us to another session of the Eastern City Council Orientation Session. Um, this gives us the time to, um, ask the administration any questions as it relates to the agenda, um, for business tonight. Any other questions that the council may, um, impose to us? So, we're gonna get right in it. And go around. Do you have any questions? This will be our second reading. For a couple of ordinance changes, animal control is one of them. Did anyone have any questions as it relates to that?
No, I didn't, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. Item two. Drug paraphernalia.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Moving right along to new business, item A. Discussion considering approval of a special land use for proposed drive-through and carryout restaurant to be located on the north side of Michigan Avenue. At two eight seven two four Michigan Avenue, just east of Spring Hill. In the B three general business district. Carrie Roden is the applicant. You guys have any questions? Or Mrs. Hines?
Is that, is that the, uh, the, uh, young lady that's gotta put the, the, uh, pavement in the alley?
They have to put what, sir? I'm sorry, sir?
Is that down by Spring Hill, the one she told me they, they wanted to put a pavement down in the alley?
Right, yep. So that's the old Catfish Corner.
Right, right, right.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Shaw?
I did have a question on, on that particular item. I know that they were trying to get my, my information. Um, can I take a pause real quick?
Yes, sir. You can come back to it when you're ready. And I did see the architect on the line, Mr. David Allen. We need to ask him any questions as it relates to the floor plan layout. I know Ms. Roden was on the planning commission. I don't know if she's on right now. I'm pretty sure she'll be on this evening.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Hey, Carrie, how you doing? Hey, David, how are you?
I'm good. How about yourself?
Good.
Good.
Good to see you guys.
Good to be seen.
And just say, I just wanna say thank you so very much for re, you know, bringing some revitalization to that area as much needed. Catfish Corner was a much beloved, um, spot for a lot of people in the community as it relates to, um, food. So when I heard you say at the planning commission meeting that you would act, that you're actually dealing with the previous owner, I just knew that that was a good thing. And then, of course, David Allen has done a lot of work for me in the past. And, uh, as an architect, I don't think I've ever heard him say that, uh, you know, he was really pleased with what you were doing and, and that it was a really, really nice project above board. So I'm looking forward to the project.
I had a question, Mr. Mayor, before you go further.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Are they, are they, are they extending that building or just, just remodeling? Are they extending part of the building or just gonna just remodel it?
Go ahead, David.
Yeah, the building is being extended towards the back. Um, I believe another ten feet or so, um, just to add more room for kitchen. And, and, uh, and that's it, yes.
Yeah, that's good. That's commendable.
Right. Thank you.
Cause I know, I know when they had it open before, uh, they, they couldn't hardly have no kitchen back there cause it was small. But now, now, she can go for it.
Yeah.
That's good.
Right. Yeah, and she's added a drive-through component to that as well. It's gonna be very nice.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I, I got my, uh, question here.
Yes, sir. Please, Councilman Shaw.
Now, it is the, um, has this been accounted for, for the pavement? Because I noticed it said that the city has agreed to, uh, pave the abandoned alley. So has this been accounted for in the budget for this particular project? Or is something that's gonna be, uh, was gonna be done anyway?
Yeah, that was actually a project that Mr., uh, Mr. Bivens had had in line with a few other alleyways in the city to accommodate not only, uh, businesses but residents as well. And I don't know if Mr. Bivens is on as of yet. I'm looking to see if I see his number. But I know that he'll be able to answer that question a little bit better than, than me. But yeah, this is something that has been included in the projects that we're doing across the, the city.
Okay, so, so if this doesn't come to fruition or, and somehow they, uh, you know, don't make it happen, is this the pavement of this, this, uh, alleyway is still gonna be on the list to be paved, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, that's all I have.
I'm pretty confident in, in Mrs. Roden's ability to make it happen. She has other businesses in the community and other properties in the community. So we gonna get her to the, we gonna get her to the finish line, for sure.
It is in my district, so I definitely want her to, you know, get it, get it on. I mean, so I definitely wanna, you know, um, we wanna promote it and, and do all we can to cheerlead this, uh, project. Definitely want that to happen.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on the pavement part.
Please, Mayor Protemp.
You said the city is gonna pave the back end, the driveway?
The alley.
The alley?
City, city-owned alley that abuts that property that, uh, Mr. Bivens has been eyeing for some time now. Um, that particular one also, I believe, is the one on Michigan Avenue southbound behind the property that's at, uh, behind the Dairy Queen. And then across the street as well.
Dairy Queen. Okay, that's, that's, okay. And then you said across the street?
Right, across the street from that and behind the, um, Hollywood Pharmacy, those businesses there.
Okay, so my question is, due to the city's finances, I would rather see pavement on a street versus an alley? Um, I don't think our constituents will want us to pave an alley versus paving the street that they live on. That's messed up. So I think some, that's something that we need to look at. I mean, I know that, you know, I'm not saying as far as the business is concerned, I'm happy to have that there. But at this time, for me, uh, with our, with our budget and with all the projects that we need to go on, and I'm getting customer calls all day long regarding streets and what, you know, I don't think that would be a good look for us, right? I think our attention should be not alleys. Our attention should be streets. So that's something that we need to look at. Cause I don't think our constituents have any time would be happy with that.
Um, if I can speak to that a little bit. So the alley work is just adding a little, it's not entaking up, up an entire street or anything. It's just adding a little bit to something that's already kind of, it's already ready to be paved. It wasn't adding, um, and it's like a, a bigger cost or any, like too much of a bigger cost, I guess. Um, I know Jerome could probably speak better on this since this is his expertise, but I do know when we talked about it, it, um, they're not, they're not very big, so paving them won't cost us that much more.
It'll cost us something though, that we can do something with the project. Right, that's what I'm seeing. I'm not, I, that's what I'm seeing. And I, alley, then the alleyway on John Daly and behind the Dairy Queen, there's nothing there. So why would we pay something that's not there? And, and, and does that alleyway belongs to the city or the property itself?
Um, good evening, Mayor Protemp. That alley belongs to the city.
Right, and like I said, you know, um, our, our constituents will really be mad if we pave in an alley versus we paying for a street to be fixed. So.
Mayor, Mayor Protemp, we got like new businesses coming in. Like you got one before you tonight where I have to pave the alley because they're gonna be using that alley for the drive-through, um, soul food restaurant. We own those alleys, so we have to bring, if we're asking the businesses to bring their business up the code, then we have to bring our alleys up the code. Right, a lot of them are gravel, but we own them. I looked into that first to make sure we still own them, cause I thought the city had vacated all alleys, but we haven't. So if we own it and we asking the business to do something, then we have to address our issues too.
Okay. So what about the one on John Daly behind the, uh, ice cream? There's nothing there. So why would we pave it? Why would we spend money paving that and there's nothing there yet?
It's already paved back there. It's paved behind Gracie Seas and the Dairy Queen.
Okay, well, the mayor was speaking on, um, I guess.
He wants me to, he wants me to finish paving it. It's only paved up to a point. He wants me to finish the rest of that. That's what he is speaking on.
Okay, so the, the part that she's finishing on, is there a business there at that time, at right now?
Yeah, we do have Mayor Protemp. We, we have several businesses that's actually looking at that particular parcel of land. As you all know, that that building on the corner there, the muffler shop, has been vacated at least fifteen years, for sure. Maybe longer than that. But, uh, the alleyway is just, it is for access to it, it is, it, I don't know if you have had a chance to ride through there.
Oh, yeah, I ride through there all the time.
Yeah.
That's why I was asking about the, the money part.
We just, yeah, we just completed that area where John Daly is. All that roadway up to Michigan Avenue is paved. And the alley is the only thing that's outstanding with that building that's on the corner there and both are ice source.
All right. Are you?
Okay. Any other questions as it relates to item A?
Uh, yes, Mayor, this is, uh, Councilwoman Wildly.
Yes, ma'am, Councilwoman Wildly.
Um, I, this is kind of for Jerome because I thought we had vacated all the alleys in the city too. Because there's an alley that runs along my, um, property. And when asked about it, they said it now belongs to the owner of the property and it's my responsibility or whoever's responsibility to maintain it. How do we differentiate that?
Uh, counsel, to the council and to the mayor, um, I look, we, I have my engineers and I look up the alleys where we placing these businesses are and they belong to the city. So I understand what you're talking about because we did, uh, who was going to family dollar, somebody was going near you and they, and they were responsible for the alley. Or we were splitting alley between the residents and them. So, you know, I had to further look into that, cause I think the city vacated some alleys, but not all alleys.
And what, what would be the determination as to why some and not others? Because, I mean, because, you know, there's alleys on my taxes, so, you know.
I, I would have to look and see. I would have to look to see the rationale behind it. You know, some of them, some of them, I know they vacated so people could extend their property life, both the back-to-back neighbors. So that's why you got fences farther back and you don't have no alleys there. So I would just have to, um, investigate that and understand why. You know, it might have been a residential thing where people petitioned the city to vacate the alley and they, and they obliged them so both neighbors could increase this, their square foot on their property.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I would have to investigate that and look into.
Okay, if you could and give me some sort of response, um,
Yeah, yeah.
to that. And the other, um, one behind Gracie Seas, wasn't that done, uh, when the mayor was on council? Back in, uh, when they first had it paved, there was some issue with having that paved behind Gracie Seas? I can't quite recall what it was at this point, but I know there was some issue with having it done. Or with the city doing it. Let's put it that way.
Uh, I believe that Gracie Seas and the Dairy Queen were, were up under the DDA. They did some modifications to their building and the parking lot over there, the, the little parking lot in the middle there with the island. Cause the city still owns that. And I think the city paved the alley. But I, I would have to look into that, but I think that's how that, uh, situation went down. That was between those owners and the DDA.
Okay, and, uh, last question is, um, to do this, what fund would this money be coming out of? To pay?
It would be, it would come out the, it would come out the road fund.
Okay, um, uh, I don't know how, if we differentiate between streets and alleys as far as money, but the road fund does accommodate that. It wouldn't be an issue?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and just speaking as it relates to, uh, alleys, is this something that this body wants to explore as it relates to the rest of the alleys in the city? And vacating those, we can put that up for discussion at a later date. We'll let Mr. Bivens go back and make that determination on what it is, um, that we would have to do as a city to, to determine that, whether we vacated or not, and then go from there. All right, any other questions on item A? Okay, item B. Any questions on item B? And this is the assessor's contract. It expired on ten thirty-one of twenty twenty. They're looking to extend it to ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
Mr. Chairman.
Please, yes.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just have one question.
Hold on one second. Councilman Shaw, Councilman Williams has the floor. Go ahead, Councilman Williams.
Are you saying, uh, you talking about the assessors that we have in there?
Our city assessor, yes.
Yeah. No, I, I, why, why are we not going out for bids?
That's up to this body?
Yeah, we go out for bid. I, 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 I'm supporting to go out for bids. I, I, because, I'm gonna tell you, I think we get, we get, we get a better performance than we're getting.
And I think one of the biggest things is that, um, WCA is one of the only vendors in the state that, uh, have what we need as it relates to assessor ratings. Uh, Vijay, if you can speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, I actually wanna expand on that a little bit. And, uh, Troy, if you could also unmute Doug Shaw. He's on the, uh, on the line here as well. Um, but, uh, Councilman, one, one thing I do wanna mention, uh, WCA is, uh, obviously, they work with a lot of municipalities, but one thing they do for us that is not traditionally done is they prepare the tax roll. Um, so this is an additional thing that they provide for us. And it is something that if we didn't have them do it, I am not sure how much time we would have to take on to my team outside of that as well. Um, Doug, I don't know if you're able to kind of give an idea of time-wise, how much, uh, Mario puts in for that. Uh, but, I mean, I, I can say from working with them, I have had good experiences in my three months here. Um, when I do need something from Mario or Doug, they do respond to me. Um, but, I mean, just strictly speaking from that, if we were to look outside, we would have to also ensure that whatever company we bring in and consider would have to do the tax roll, prepare the tax roll for us.
Vijay, let, let me, let me say this, okay? And I, and I respect you a lot because I know you're doing great work, okay? But Mario and this community dealing with our public, okay? Okay, I don't, I, I don't, I don't buy that, that that's the best profession that we can get, okay? Because the way he talks to people and stuff like that, okay, we, we don't, we don't have to take that stuff here and sit in a next to. Okay? And the thing about it is you can't tell me he the only person that we can get to do that job. Because we had, we had, we had the county in here doing surveying the properties and stuff, setting, setting the rate for the property before, way before, uh, they, they turned to be full-time there. Okay, so to come here and say that, that's the only thing that we can do? Now, now, if we go out there, if we go out there and, uh, send out for bids and we can't find nobody that can do the job, okay? I can see that. But it's time to put us to bid that out. They've been there long enough. Okay, and some things that have been happening is the people are not satisfied with it. Okay?
Okay.
So I figure that we go out for the bids and then we set that, set that record and that offers assessing office straight.
I don't oppose it. I don't oppose that at all.
I, I do have one question, just to understand, um, given our current contract is up and WCA has been working under the, essentially thinking that this new contract would be occurring, um, while we are putting this out for bid, uh, how should we treat the current relationship? Uh, and, and the reason I say that is we are currently paying, uh, in accordance with this new unapproved contract, uh, that happened back since, uh, October and November, November. Um, so this is more me just asking, I wanna make sure that I'm doing the right thing based on, uh, if you wanna proceed that route.
Okay, so let me ask you a question. Okay, the contract goes up when?
October thirty-first.
Okay, October thirty-first. Okay, and it, and this the first time we hearing about the contract is up. So, you know, from October all the way up to now, we could have been, we could have been, uh, seeked out for, uh, uh, different opportunities.
Absolutely, yeah, you're correct.
So, and, and I know you wasn't here, and I know it should have been done, a lot of things, a lot of things that should have been done is not getting done. So I appreciate you, okay? I understand what you're saying. But when it comes down, we come down with Mario, uh, relationship with the public, it's not, it's not very good at that. Okay, and, and we, we don't need that. We need, we need people to believe in us. We work for them. We work for the people. Okay? And I, and I, I need to make that clear. And I'm gonna send that message. People got to understand and that whoever they are, the contractors or workers or history, they, they work for the people. Without the people, you ain't got no job.
Right.
May, may I speak? This is Doug Shaw from WCA.
Go ahead, Mr. Shaw.
Good evening, Council. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to hear, um, the comments from Mr. Williams. We represent thirty-five communities in the state of Michigan, and this is the first time I've ever heard anything like this about any of my staff. I know Mario works in other jurisdictions and works well, so I'm just kind of surprised at the comments. Um, I'm open to anything the council wishes to do. We'll continue to represent the city. Even though we don't have a contract, we're not gonna put anybody in a, in a situation. I mean, we, we, we don't operate that way. We haven't been in business since nineteen eighty-two because we conduct business poorly. Um, we want the city of Exeter as a client and want to continue to have a same city of Exeter a client. Um, I'm just kind of disappointed to hear this and I, I, I don't know what to say because the performance from Marwan over the years has been exemplary. So I just, I don't know what to say.
Well, we, we think, we thank you, Doug, for just chiming in and, and, and understand this, that, you know, we all have different experiences with people. My experience with, uh, Mario has been great. So, um, you know, as it relates to complaints for assessment, I know it's just what it is. He's in a hard position. Um, so, so I don't know what exactly the councilman is referring to, but he will point me in the right direction. We'll get to the bottom of it. Because at the end of the day, we are about service and service in our community. So, you know, I just know that people don't like some of the answers that they may get from Mario because he is the assessor. Um, and I understand that. So, and that is what it is. So let's move it, let's move it forward. Is it the consensus of this body to, um, to table this matter and, and look out for bid? Um, for this, we'll deal with it when we get to the agenda item.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Go ahead, Council, Councilwoman Wa-.
Okay, um, in reference to the complaints, uh, are there any specifics? And secondly, um, I understand that we will be, that once the old contract ended, the new contract began according to what I'm reading here. Is that not true?
Yeah, the attorney, the attorney or Vijay would have to speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, uh, once the old contract ended, the new contract billing.
Automatically began.
Began, correct.
So we've been paying right along, correct? And we will continue to until whatever the council's, uh, pleasuring is happens, right?
Right, and what it is is essentially a four percent bump in all the numbers from the previous contract.
Yeah, I saw, I saw. That's why I'm, I'm confirming that this is what we'll be doing, okay? That's it.
All right. Moving right along, any other questions as it relates to item B?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just had, um, the same question as my colleague is that, you know, I'm wondering why this has come to us now. Um, you know, this is something that should have been before us a while ago, if the contract was up on in October. So I didn't, I didn't hear the explanation of, of, of that point.
Yeah, well, I, I'll speak for that, um, as it relates to all contracts in the city. Um, we're putting all of those contracts together right now between, um, our chief document keeper, the city clerk and, uh, the treasurer and any other contracts that we have in any of our other departments. And then they will be sent out to all of you, so we'll all be on the same page when it comes up for contracts to expire or to be extended however. So we're going through all of those now and pretty much all of our contracts will, will come up to this body to, uh, send out for bid. So that was gonna be one of my suggestions tonight anyways, we talked about this matter, so.
Now, we did this before with the contracts and I, I believe, uh, Felicia sent out some contracts. But this one was not among those that were sent out, and this was earlier when we got, when we first got on council, maybe some, uh, a couple of months uh, after. Uh, we had asked about, uh, having copies of contracts, and I think I still have it in my email. But this one, uh, was not a part of that, uh, list of contracts. We had AT&T, we had some, some other, uh, vendors on there. So I'm just wondering why that that wasn't a part of it. Was it not caught or was it not a?
Yeah, I really.
Information that she had?
Yeah. So, Clerk, you wanna jump in there?
Um, I sent out, um, I sent out in your monthly report, you'll recall getting a whole list of, um, an Excel document of contracts and that is my notification to you. Um, the mayor also has those notification, that same thing. I sent it to him as well. And so WCA assessing is on there.
Okay, yeah, cuz I, I didn't, I didn't see that. So, so it was on there prior to October of uh October twenty twenty is what you're saying?
Yes.
So, oh, so again. Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor. Can I ask a question?
Uh, hold on one second, Cosmo and Shaw, you go to floor?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay, yeah, this, this is just stuff that as it relates to housekeeping was, we're working together to make sure that we tighten up the whole ship. It's just part of it, so. Also, I mean, you know, this.
Yeah, I mean, I, I take responsibility for that too because I mean, it, it, I just maybe overlooked the, the the reference that she sent out, so I, you know, I take responsibility to.
Send it to you right now.
Okay. Cosmo Shaw, you done?
Mr. Doug Shaw.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm done, Mr. Chair, I'm done.
Okay, go ahead, Cosmo Williams, now.
Uh, is he, is he the owner operator of this company?
Yes, I am. I'm one of the uh partners in the company. I'm the man partner of the company. But yes, I am a part owner in the company.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, 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 I don't know what this council is gonna be, but I, I think before we go into that kind of thing, we need to have conversation.
Yeah, I mean, a motion will be made either way. I mean, you can make a motion again to table it and, you know, we, you know, if you get support, we can discuss it and then move forward and then go out for, for bid. I would say that we do that with all of our contracts.
Yep.
It's Vijay and, and Felicia are getting those things together for us and uh we move forward that way. Okay. Any other questions as it relates to item B? Comments?
So what, what do you, can we table this uh this item or, or what?
Sir, sir, you can't, you, you can, once we get to the business of of tonight for the council meeting and the general meeting. You can make that motion if you like before any other motion is made. And the council voted up or down if you have support.
And that's item B, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. We do have.
I have one question.
I'm sorry, Mayor Proton, go ahead.
Um, if this body decides to table this, what would it happens? Um, have they been assessing? Uh, I know they have one month or so when they start doing assessing and, and residents coming in. When would that take place? When would that take place?
Mayor, if I can jump in, we are uh, this is Doug Shaw from WCA. We are right in the midst of the, of what we call is the March border review. The assessment notices were mailed out about a week ago, maybe a little longer. And the meetings for the border review are, are coming up. And this is the time that the public gets to come in and review the role and review their values and if they feel their values inappropriate, they can appeal to the local border review. And then once we get through the March border review period, we send the assessment rolls to the Wayne County Equalization Department to be certified. And that happens early April.
Early April? Okay, okay, I thought it was coming up. So, Mr. Chair, my question to you that e- even if we uh decide to go off a bid, um, we would have to let this company continue until after the assessment is done? Because I don't think we would have time to find another company if that's what this body chooses to do um in between now and April.
Yeah, I think what Mr. Shaw said was that they'll continue as business as usual.
Okay.
Find someone else, whether there's the successful a bid or we give someone else as it relates to the process, so I really appreciate him saying that and acknowledging that um to, to help continue to move us forward, so we won't have a, a delay in service.
Okay.
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. All right, we do have several closed session items. Mister Jones, David Jones?
Yes, Mayor, we have three matters for litigation, McGill, Clark and Murray.
Motion to go in a closed session?
So move it, Sam.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Whiteley?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Member Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Yeah, we have six yays.
All right, motion carry. We will be going into closed session and we will try to be out for the start of the general meeting at seven o'clock. Troy, you have some folks that you need to bring into the meeting. Let's make sure that we get those folks into the meeting.
Yes, please.
Close session.
Eric Lades, Charles Hayden and Chief Riley.
All right. Thank you. Give them one more minute and we'll get started. All right, look like we have everyone back with us. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to another meeting of the Inglewood City Council. Date is March the first twenty twenty-one and the time is now seven thirty-one PM. Like to call the meeting to order. Before we actually get started with the meeting, I would like to, before we do the uh pledge of allegiance to acknowledge that we will have uh prayer by um Pastor Catrice McKenzie Smith of the historic Smith Chapel AME Church. I believe she is on the line if we can unmute her, um Troy and take her video off. And basically what I want to do today is because we have there's a lot of things going on in the world. I know that you were praying before the pledge of allegiance, but we had a loss in the community of one of our, one of my colleagues, uh Henry Crump Junior. He served for thirty-one years as the former chief deputy chief for the city of Inglewood. And he served on city council in two thousand nine to two thousand twelve as a representative for District Six. So as we stand before the pledge of allegiance, we'll have a moment of silence and then the next voice you will hear is Pastor Kirk McKenzie. All rise please. A moment of silence. Our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Pastor. Prayer please.
Let us pray. God of many names, we come calling on your powerful name tonight. God of love, God of life, God of peace, God of community and God of justice. Now, we ask that you would bless the leaders who've been elected to serve this city. God equip them with guidance, knowledge, wisdom, creativity and vis- vision, Lord, to serve. God, we ask that you would bless the people who are gathered for this meeting today. And Lord, that you would remind each person that we all have a part to do as we've all been called to serve. God, we ask that you would bless and cover the city of Inglewood. Restore it, renew it, God, and transform it for your glory. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you so very much, Pastor. Roll call please.
Mayor Wimberly?
Here, reporting from City Hall, Inglewood, Michigan.
Mayor Proton Howard?
Here, um, in Inglewood in my home.
Councilwoman Whiteley?
Yes, I'm participating remotely from my home in Inglewood, Michigan, county of Wayne.
Okay, Councilman Williams?
Participating at my home here in the city of Inglewood, county of Wayne.
Councilwoman Washington?
Here in the city of Inglewood in my home in Wayne County, Michigan.
Councilman Chisholm?
Here, reported from my home, Inglewood, Michigan, county of Wayne.
And Councilman Shaw?
Here in Inglewood, Michigan.
Mayor, we have six presidents tonight and we do have a core.
All right, motion carries. Let's get off and to it, approval of the agenda.
With the additional items?
Yes.
With the two additional items? We'll have those as items B, so item C and D.
And support for discussion.
All right, it's been moved and properly supported, discussion?
Um, at the last council meeting, I have voted on an item or items with contingency. So either I just wanted to know if add them at this time or just do it during my council application for a motion to reconsider.
Uh, I don't know, how would that work, city clerk?
He can, once we get done with the new business, if he would like to reconsider there, um, he can. He could also do under his um council comments, but uh it would be good to do it under new business, um, to reconsider it or actually even under where you state previous business also, he can do it there as well.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right. Roll call please.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiteley?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
And Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays for the agenda approval.
All right, motion carries. Moving through, no presentations, public hearing. Send agenda.
Don't move.
Port. Moved and properly supported, roll call please.
Mayor Pro, I'm sorry, Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
And Councilmember Whiteley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, boards and commissions going around. I know Reverend Williams used to have one from the beginning.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend, like to recommend Mr. Walter Johnson for the uh Park and Recreation uh Board in, in my district.
Port.
Moved and properly supported, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiteley?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
And Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, motion carries. Are there any others? All right, I'm looking to reappoint Lorenzo A. Moner Junior to the Police and Fire Retirement Board. He's been serving. He expired on twelve nineteen and he wants to continue to serve. I just spoke with him last week. I can have a motion to support that?
So move.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
And Councilmember Whiteley?
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I, I need to ask the clerk uh whether or not uh on the zone zoning board of appeal, I thought we already ate uh uh selected uh put back on there uh his term, uh Roosevelt Stubbs?
No, you have seven um persons on there already. The only thing is, is we have been unsuccessful um several times. We're getting in touch with Dorsey Williams. So, I mean, we can't get in touch with him, have not been able to get in touch with him. So I don't know if someone wants, I mean, and he hasn't resigned, so I don't know.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
I, I spoke to Dorsey uh about a week or so ago and I told him they were looking for him and he should call.
Yes.
But apparently he has some, um, I can reach out to him again, but he has some issue with health, his knee and rehabilitation and stuff like that, but I can still reach out to him like um tomorrow and see again, have him call you direct.
Yes, I mean, I've been calling the number that I have for him, so.
I'm trying to, Roosevelt Stubbs supposed to have been on that committee.
Right, he's in District Four, he's appointee for District Four.
And he's expired.
Councilmember Chisholm, would you like to reappoint him? Sound like he want to serve.
Yes, um, I'm, and, and, and forgive my mind for forgetting the conversation, but I thought we had kind of sort of discussed this the last time. Um, I was, I was in favor of it because I know we were talking about.
I thought we had passed it too. That's what I was trying to figure out.
So I guess the question is, is that this board, it requires, um, it's for seven persons and you have right now, if you don't include Roosevelt Stubbs and you including Mr. Dorsey Williams, you have one, two, three, four, five, six, you have seven persons.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we uh extend the contract for Roosevelt Stubbs and on the zoning board of appeals.
There's support?
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Howard?
Yes.
And Council, uh, Councilmember Whiteley?
Yeah.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
You have six yays, Mr. Mayor, for Roosevelt Stubbs.
All right, motion carries for Roosevelt to continue to serve in District Four. All right, any others?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, we got an email. I don't know if you had an opportunity to review it yet from Commissioner Faison for the planning commission?
Yes. Definitely want to reappoint Kimberly Faison to the planning commission. Thank you, Councilmember Chisholm. It's been moved and properly supported. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiteley?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
And Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, that's good, right along. Any others? Any others? All right, hearing none, let's move right along. All right, uh, Councilmember Chisholm, previous business, what you have for us?
Yes, I would like to add a motion to reconsider items A, LD twenty-six, item B, LD twenty dash twenty-seven. Um, I'm sorry, items A, LD dash, uh, LD twenty dash twenty-six. Item B, LD twenty dash twenty-seven, item C, twenty dash twenty-eight from the previous Inglewood City Council meeting. Um, and the reason being, I have voted yes with contingency upon repea- receiving proof of payment. Receipts came through and they have a variances of dates on them. Um, some dates were after the meeting of uh the last council meeting and therefore I would just like to go ahead, change my vote to a no. I'm speaking solely for myself and no one else on this body. I believe at the last meeting, the vote was four yays and two nays.
Okay, so we can do that all in one? And your, 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 you said your contingency is that you didn't get all the information that you required?
No, I, I did receive it, but after, you know, further investigation and looking at it, I would like to go ahead to change my vote to a no. I have voted yes on all of them with contingency.
Okay, all right, a city clerk, can we put them all in the same?
Yes, I have them all in the same.
Okay, then.
So that for his motion to reconsider, um, somebody needs to, on the other side, needs to support that as well. I mean, he made the motion.
So he would need support from what?
He needs support from someone from the other side. He's reconsidering his vote.
So he needs support for somebody that owes the against.
Okay, I support it.
All right.
Thank you.
Moved and properly supported, any discussion?
Uh, yes. Um, I was wondering if the rest of the council got the email I sent about chargebacks? I sent out an email about tax chargebacks, because I believe at the last meeting, um, you said that the person involved in this did not owe us, and that's not true. They still owe us, because, uh, they don't owe Wayne County, Wayne County does not eat cities debt. What they do is act as a collection person, but if they can't collect that money from the party, they charge that, uh, money back to the city. And we have gone through this before, with those chargebacks, the famous three hundred and some odd thousand dollars that Ann Capella did when she was, uh, uh, running the city as a city manager. So, if the per, if the bill has gone to Wayne County, it does not mean that they still don't owe the city. They still owe the city. What Wayne County is acting as, as a, um, a collection agency, and if they in turn cannot collect that money from the people, they charge
Yeah.
back to the city.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I think you're definitely partially right.
She right.
As it relates to chargeback, so, if, if the person is actually in a payment plan with the county, the county's already paid the city, and the person is actually not defaulted on their, uh, payment plan, they own, they owe the county, so they're still paying the county, it's not charged back to the city. So just for point of clarification.
But it will be charged back to the city, because they're not going to eat that debt.
Yeah.
The county never eats city debts, I mean, what would be the purpose in that?
I totally agree, totally agree.
I need to.
Yeah, just know that this person is in the, is in a payment plan with the county, there's no money's owed to the city, so the money is still being paid to the county. So if that person defaults on the county, then it comes back to the city, as it relates to a chargeback.
Okay, and do you have a timeframe in that? And do you still sell property to those people owing in that instance?
Yeah.
Is there, is there like, huh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just say it's something that this body just needs to add to the process, and if that's the case, then that's what we need to do.
What, what, what is it we need to do?
Just add, if, if a person owes any taxes, period, to the state, to the county, to local municipality, that they can't buy any property from the city. Simple as that.
Um, is, is Attorney Jones on this call to, can he, can he reference anything there, or even the treasurer?
Let, let's either one of them. Let's chime in, guys.
I mean, we're talking about policy here, correct?
No, we're talking about owing the.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Wiley, I stepped on you, you said it's not about policy?
Uh, you said, if the body wants to, then they can make a policy, I never suggested we make a policy, I'm talking about facts. Either you owe, or you don't.
Oh, no, I think my, my question, my question was, uh, what we're specifically talking about at this point is the policy related to, to whom we can sell. Is, is that what we're specifically discussing, or are we still talking about, uh, whether amounts are owed to the county or to the city? I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
I believe the fact that, um, that you still owe the city, because it will eventually be charged back to you. Is that correct? That what you understand chargebacks to be?
You you technically owe the county, uh, because the county does pay us, but then, as you're saying, if the county cannot collect and everything, there is the settlement process back with the city. So, i- it's, it's hard to say yes or no on that in a, uh, you know, in a clear-cut fashion, there's, there's different elements to it. So, for a period of time, yes, you owe the county, but then, uh, it does eventually get settled back with the city, but using the term owe, uh, you can't make a payment to the city, so technically, you would owe the county.
Okay, just for a point of clarification, that makes absolutely no sense, because there's either one or the other, okay? And maybe we should get somebody from the county to come here and explain it to us.
That's it. That's not a problem, and I'll definitely set that up with, uh, the treasurer, Eric Chabri. After your email, I forwarded, forwarded it to him, and we had a really good conversation about that. So, I'll definitely get him on the line, that's one of the things that we need to do anyway, because of the foreclosures that's coming up with the county, whether or not they're going to do foreclosures this year or not, so we're going to do a presentation here soon.
And one other thing, I didn't hear anyone answer that they got that email I sent out.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we, I got it, I got it.
Yeah, I received it. Okay, so, so, so at any rate.
My question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Now, this individual, you, you said is on a payment plan to the, to the county.
As though, yeah, as of these receipts, for sure, but I believe he paid all of that to the county.
Okay, so if he's on.
I can't speak to that.
Right, right, uh, well, I mean, if it's, if it's in the, i- if it's in the documents, it, it, it speaks to it already, am I correct?
Correct.
So then, this individual does not owe the city, if it's in the payment plans to the, to the county.
That's correct.
To, to my understanding, now, if David can, I don't know if Attorney Jones can, can chime in with that, um, I, I think we probably would be speaking something about policy, uh, if we're going to have anyone who owes anything, any kind of taxes, period. So, can he, can David, can you speak to that?
Yeah, I can't speak to the policy, but I, I was going to speak up, uh, prior to the treasurer speaking. It, I don't think there's any dis- that if the taxes go unpaid at the city for a long enough period of time, they're transferred over to the county. And what I was going to add is that the treasurer is correct, once they're transferred to the county, you cannot come to the city and pay them anymore. So, while technically the money is for the city's benefit, it's owed to the county. Now, I think to Member Wiley's point, her concern is that should the person not honor that payment plan with the county, it eventually will get charged back to the city. So the policy question to be addressed is, should we change it right now? The charter speaks to money owed to the city. So the, the policy question should be, do we want to also include any and all money owed, I think as the mayor indicated, to the county, to the state, to the city? Uh, but the fact that you cannot compare it to the city, um, it is owed to the county once it's transferred from the city to the county.
So, as, as our charter speaks, it's owing the city as, as of right now.
Correct.
I just need, uh, uh, a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Okay, when you bring a reconsideration back for a vote, it's got to be two of the people that, that, that voted that consideration, am I correct? Okay, because the simple fact is, Mrs. Wiley did not vote for that, okay, and I don't know how she can, how she can second it.
She can second the motion, she can second the motion, he brought it up, he was on the prevailing side, it just needs a second, period. No matter.
When he, when we reconsiderate something, the opposite side can.
It, it's just a, he, he had to bring up the motion, the actual motion, somebody who was on the prevailing side, which he was, and it's just, the motion just to reconsider just needs a second. It doesn't have to be anybody from, it just needs a second. It doesn't have to be anybody from any specific side, would you like for me to read it to you?
No, no, Felicia, I, 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 I thought I heard you said that, um, it should come from the other side. So I think that's probably.
From the prevailing side.
I know, but when you were saying the other side, I, 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 I thought you was, to me, I thought you was talking about the unprevailing side, when you said the other side, okay, so.
It just needs, it just needs to have a second.
Okay, so that's, that's the clarification that I needed, because.
Brings it up, don't have to be from the prevailing, but it just needs a second.
What I thought you said, what I thought you said was, it, it needs to be second from the other side, so I, I wasn't for sure myself what you meant by that, but now that you said that it's from the, it can be second by anyone.
It can, yeah, it just needs a second.
Okay.
Okay. So, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Wa- uh, Williams.
No.
Councilmember Shaw.
No.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Mayor, you have four yays.
All right, so motion carries to not sell the property. All right, moving right along, let's go, second reading?
A second reading and approval on an amendment to Chapter ninety-one of the City of Inxter Code of Ordinance, animals.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
What?
We're properly moved and supported? And this is the second reading, so are we opening it up for, what is this? We're opening it up for discussion with the council and the public, or what are we doing?
No, we've already had the public hearing at the last meeting, the first reading, the public hearing, so this is just the second reading and the approval.
All right, good then, so we can do it all right now, right?
Yes.
All right, any questions? In this body? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Wiley.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
We have six yays, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion carries, item two.
Item two is a second reading and approval on an amendment to Chapter one thirty-six point three zero of the City of Inxter Code of Ordinances Drug Paraphernalia.
Don't move.
Port.
The mood is properly supported, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
And Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, motion carries, enough into new business.
Item A, under new business, is consideration and approval of a special land use for a proposed drive-through and carryout restaurant to be located on the north side of the street at two eight seven two four Michigan Ave, just east of Spring Hill Street in the B-three General Business District. Terry Roden is the applicant.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Support.
The mood is properly supported, discussion. Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, moving right along, item B.
Item B is consideration and, uh, and approval as the previous WCA assessing contract expired. Consider approval of WCA assessing contract with the effective dates of eleven one twenty twenty to ten thirty-one twenty twenty-three.
Yes, sir.
I moved and we tabled this item, we continue working until such time we have sent out for bills.
Tabled to a date specific, or, um?
But we would need to, you, you all are instructing staff to go out for an RFP, so we had to put together RFP and then go from there.
Can he add that to the motion, please?
Yes, sir, I did.
I can't hear you, um, Councilmember Williams.
Okay, 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 let me see, let me give you a little bit more volume, okay?
Yes.
All right, I'm making a motion that we table it, okay, until such time we go out for, for bills.
Okay. Thank you.
Or? Is there support?
Support.
Moved and properly supported, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
No.
Councilmember Wiley.
No.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
And Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor, we have four yays and, um, two nays.
All right, motion carries, so we will start putting that information together, um, as it relates to an RFP for our city assessor. So the treasurer will be working with, um, working to get that together, and then we'll present it back to this body. All right, moving right into public participation.
Mayor, we got item C.
I forgot, I'm sorry. I just looked down and saw item C, but.
Okay, um, to vote in accordance with the discussion, um, that was had in closed session, McGill.
Don't move.
Your support?
Support.
Roll call.
Councilmember Wiley.
No.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
No.
And Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Mayor, we have four yays and two nays.
All right, motion carries, item D.
Item D is to vote in accordance with the discussion that was had in closed session, clerk.
Don't move.
Your support? Your support?
Support.
All right, it's been moved and properly supported, roll call please.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
And Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, motion carries. All right, we're good, now city clerk?
Yes.
All right, good, moving right into public participation. Brings us to, um, the time in our agenda for the public to address this body and any concerns you may have. We're asking that, um, you keep it to one minute, of course, we're asking just right off that you keep all comments respectful to the body. Let's go ahead and get Charles Blackwell out the way, Steve. I'll give him, I mean, I'm sorry, uh, Councilman Chisholm, if you can give him instructions as well, please, I'm sorry.
Sure, uh, we are at public participation, for those who have joined us by video, please use the raise hand feature. For those who have dialed in by telephone, please use star nine to raise your hand and be recognized. When you are unmuted, please state your name, for the record, you have one minute to speak.
All right, Charles Blackwell, please.
Hi, this is, uh, Charles Blackwell, uh, Mayor Wimbley, that was a very nice interview that you gave to the Detroit Free Press. Now, let me tell the public why you are afraid of a independent investigation for the Alex Legion case. You knew about the stealing going on by Alex Legion, and you did nothing. Now, you are scared of the independent investigation, because you know, when Michigan State Police come and investigate City Hall, they're going to find out about all the corruption and backdoor deals that you are doing, and that's what you're afraid of, is them finding more dirty dirt about you, and that's what you're afraid of. Also, Attorney David Jones is a hypocrite.
Mister, Councilman Blackwell, your one minute is up.
I'm sorry, Felicia, let him continue.
Okay.
Yes, um, Mayor Wimbley owes delinquent taxes and won't nobody speak about that. That is very hypocritical for people to speak about other people's delinquent taxes, but they won't say anything about Mayor Wimbley, thank you.
All right, next person, please, Mrs. Hankerson.
Council, Mayor.
Good evening.
And citizens of Inxter, um, I just had a question, um, regarding the, um, the, um, the, uh, the proposal that we, um, gave to the council, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, and I just want to know, is there any follow-up on that, uh, about an outside investigation regarding Alex Legion? Because that's what we asked for, so I want to know if there's any progress on that.
Does anyone from this body want to speak to that? Because it's up to this council, we did get your request. Anybody?
Uh, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I just want to get something clear, because it keeps coming up over and over again. I, I thought that we had turned this over to the chief of police. What is it that they're looking for, I mean, we, we, I was waiting on the chief respond. What is it that they're looking for? I mean, we, we, I was waiting on the chief response on this investigation, okay? I'm, I'm a strong believer that we should allow our uh police department to do their thorough investigation before we make other type of decisions, okay? So I, I've been waiting on him, okay, do you know, do you know what's the holdup or whatever it is on, on that situation, or what, what's going on?
Chief is on the line right now, chief, can you speak to that, please?
And, and I'm only speaking on it because I've been asked about it, so I have to follow through from the, for the citizens of Inkster.
Hello?
And the people that asked me about it, so what do you want me to do?
And we understand that, Mr. Chairman.
Hello? Okay, go ahead, Chief Riley, speak to that, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Look, look, there's a criminal investigation going on uh, with that particular case, and uh, it is ongoing. And, and uh, and that's where it is, I mean, there's a criminal investigation going on. Uh, as far as the state police, the state police work out of our building with our investigation. So I, I, you know, I saw all this back and forth, no one's gonna be able to take it away from, whether it be us or anyone else, until the investigation is, is completed. I, I don't, uh, I, I'm, I'm just at a loss with, uh, keep asking about the independent, there, there's no, there's nothing laid down that would suggest or, or a need for independent when the police department is investigating it, and I, so, that's where we at.
Thank you, Chief Riley, I appreciate it, we just, we're just trying to follow up and make sure we're doing what's asked of us, okay?
Well, I, I, I promise you, it is, it is being investigated, we're trying to run down every lead, we're trying to make sure that, you know, we, 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 we cover what we can, talk to who, who will talk to us. Uh, we, we didn't really want to say too much about it because it makes people not want to talk to the police when they know that we're coming, you know, so, but it is being looked at, and believe me, if there's something that we need done uh, that we can't do, we have no issue at all reaching out to the state police or anyone else that we may need help for, we, we, we've never been afraid of that.
Thank you.
All right, good, moving right along, Denise Champagne, please.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
I want to express thanks to Commissioner Glenn Anderson from the Wayne County Commission. Because of him on Thursday, last Thursday, the twenty-fifth, in the City of Inkster in partnership with the Wayne County Department of Public Health, held a vaccination clinic for residents of Inkster who were sixty-five years of age and older. Under the leadership of Fire Chief Hubbard, we were able to vaccinate four hundred and ten individuals. Many thanks to the city hall staff, we feel, uh, fielded more than a thousand calls during the week. All calls received by the close of registration were returned and then appointments were made by Wayne County. We'd like to thank the Inkster Fire Department, the Inkster Police Department, and DPS, as well as all the volunteers who worked the event. Thank you also to the Legacy Group and Western Wayne Family Health Center for lending their support as well. We received many compliments from the seniors who are grateful for the clinic and very pleased with how organized the event was. Commissioner on Aging will continue to take a waiting list of those still needing their shots. Please call three one three five six one two three eight two and leave your name and phone number to be put on this list. Thank you.
And Denise, I know you can't thank yourself, but we want to thank you too for being a part of that leadership role. We got a lot of emails and, and just thanking you and the Commissioner on Aging for, for your role on that, so we really appreciate you and your leadership with that as well, thank you. All right, um, Officer Lebo? You're muted, um.
There we go. How's it going, everybody? Just wanted to, how is everybody? I just want to take a second to say that, as many of you know, um, I have been the community relations officer in the city for the last several years. While I've recently been promoted to detective, and I am proud to introduce you guys to our new community relations officer, that's Officer Megan Summers. Officer Summers has been with the department for many years and has been a lot of good accomplishments under her belt, and I really look forward to you guys getting to know her a little bit. And here's Officer Summers.
Hi, everyone, um, I will post or I'll give out my phone number if you guys want to. Um, if you want to grab a pen and paper, it's three one three four zero nine six six nine eight. Three one three four oh nine six six nine eight, that's my worksell. Um, so if you guys need me for absolutely anything, feel free to reach out, and I look forward to working with the community for everything.
Yeah, three one three?
Yep, three one three four zero nine six six nine eight.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, lastly, I just want to say that just because I'm the detective bureau now doesn't mean that anything has changed, really. My phone number is still the same, everybody can still reach out to me if they ever need anything. I just hope and look forward to serving the citizens of Inkster in another capacity. So Officer Lebo is always here, just a little bit different title, so I look forward to seeing you all again soon, hopefully in person one of these days. You all have a good night.
You too.
Thank you, Officer, for the continued work, and thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
You know, you, you've been around for a while, so we're, we're glad to see you in that position now.
Yeah, I'm excited, I look forward to it.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bibbins?
Good evening, mayor and council, audience, viewing audience, um, listening audience. I just would like to take this opportunity to thank everyone who participated this past um, February the twentieth and twenty-first, and assisting us in passing out the water filters to the residents of the City of Inkster.
All right, I'm right here.
I'd like to thank my staff, I'd like to thank the elected officials that came out. Like to thank the mayor's staff and the staff of City Hall and all those who participated and our volunteers. And to add to that, we will begin passing out filters in our building starting Wednesday, March the third, from the hours of eight AM to three thirty PM, Monday through Friday. We ask one person come up to the door, if you were waiting in your car, and please have a mask on. We will not let you in the building, we will conduct everything from our front door. Yeah, we're getting this set up tomorrow to make sure everything goes smoothly. If there are any further questions or concerns about water filters or lead tested, feel free to call my office at three one three five six three nine seven seven four. Thank you once again for all the help that we had out there, it was very successful, I think we did close to fourteen hundred filters in the two days, thank you, guys.
All right, and uh, Mr. Bibbins? If you could speak to or receive the email today as it relates to some information that is posted um, out in the community or on the website, on the state's website, can you just speak to that for council so?
Uh, yes, we received a uh, email today from Mister Blackwell um, with some information stated that me and the mayor put out false information about the lead and copper. So, for those of you who are on council in twenty nineteen, let me correct that so you clearly understand. At twenty nineteen, we were ordered as a community in the municipal by the state to do lead and copper sample at thirty of our residents' homes. Out of thirty of those homes, four of them failed, which put us over the fifteen parts per billion percentile, which caused the action level to be taken by the state. One of those action levels was that I had to go out and test the following year, which would have been twenty twenty, it's sixty residential homes for lead and copper. So I did that this past year, and in December, we were notified by the state again that we failed because we had eight homes that were over the fifteen percent lead per billion requirement. So that put us in the ninety percent percentile again, so what I did in twenty nineteen, I'm doing all over again, which I am passing out the water filters as we did on February the twentieth and twenty-first. We are beginning to test another sixty, which means thirty in the first six months, then thirty the next six months, and if we fail again, we'll do this procedure all over again. So Mister Blackwell reached out to the state and got some information, but he didn't get all the information. So I would appreciate it in the future, if you're gonna accuse me and the mayor of something, please have all the facts and information in order. I would appreciate it, and to this body, I apologize for his misunderstanding, but I just don't want the citizens to think me and the mayor put, because this is a serious issue with this lead and copper, and we're being proactive in getting it done and taking care of the city business. That's all I have to say on that comment, thank you, Mister Mayor.
One clarification, uh, Mr. Bibbins? You indicated in twenty twenty, the lead sample area, you tested sixty and only eight failed?
Yes.
Okay, and then in, in, in twenty nineteen, you tested thirty homes and only four failed?
And four failed, but, and those failures, it's put us over the ninety percent percentile with the state. We have to be below ninety percent, once we exceed that threshold, there's an action level that comes from the state, and then we have to do, meet those criteria or that action level, like we're doing now.
All right.
I, I'll wait to, to get down to council, I, I have another question, so don't run away, Mr. Bibbins, I got a question I have to ask you.
I'll be here today, I'll be here today, sir.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mister Mayor.
You're welcome.
Um, mayor, before Mister Bibbins leaves, just a point of clarification. The filters, starting the third, will be given out every day, Monday through Friday, right?
From eight AM to three thirty PM at the Department of Public Service, twenty-six nine hundred Princeton.
Okay.
Good, all right. Uh, Councilman Chisholm, you see any other hands? I don't see any. All right, moving right along, city clerk?
No comments tonight, Mister Mayor.
All right, city treasurer?
Yep, just a few things. Um, so, affected today, uh, taxes are payable to the county, this is March first. Um, up after that, the, uh, the city's audit, we've extended the date to April first, but we plan on filing in the next seven to ten days. Uh, the June thirtieth, twenty twenty forecast is ongoing. We are looking to meet with city council the week of March twenty-second, we're still hammering out the exact date. Um, in regards to the open uh, FDCVT grant filings, the, the reimbursements and um other filings we had for that, uh, Plant Moran and Tracy have made great progress on this, uh, some submissions have occurred already. More will occur this week, and uh, we anticipate all of them by next week with the question of maybe one outstanding because it requires more detail. Um, but I, I think that they've done a phenomenal job getting everything together, uh, going back two, three years, gathering the detail for it and pushing it forward, uh, further. Uh, I've been in constant contact with the Michigan Department of Treasury, two of our contacts there have said they will assist us as needed to ensure that we can uh, work on getting these FDCVT grants across the finish line, so I am optimistic on that. Um, we do continue to find issues with invoices that were neither recorded nor paid relating to prior years. Um, I mentioned this, just as these can adversely impact our current year financials, and it is nearly impossible for us to predict when these will arise. Um, this is more of a forward-looking mention right here, but at the next city council meeting, uh, we'll be presenting a proposal uh, for the Cherry Hill Apartments development, where we eliminate one pilot agreement and implement a new pilot agreement on another tax parcel. And the reason I mention this is providing this tax arrangement uh, would result not only in renovation, but also would increase our tax revenue by about eighty thousand dollars annually to the city. Uh, we'll provide more details uh, in the next council meeting, but I just wanted to say that this on, this is on the horizon, it's good news. Um, on the HR front, Sue has been here about two weeks now, she's been working through delinquent items through our first couple of weeks. Uh, she's audited and brought us up to current on the fifty-eighty and fifty-one-eighty state withholding taxes. She's brought us to current on the state assessments going back to twenty nineteen, she's helped Rhonda with the quarterly tax reporting, uh, sorry, quarterly payroll tax reporting, she's worked on job descriptions, unemployment claims, and she's began her initial review of our ACA reporting. Um, then, as always, I want to thank my team in the treasurer's office, Darius and IT, Sue and Rhonda for HR and payroll, and I also want to say, uh, thank you to Denise Champagne and Fire Chief Hubbard, that was an amazing vaccination event. I heard a lot of people say a lot of positive things about it. And then, uh, lastly, if I'm not mistaken, is Councilman Chisholm's birthday, so I wanted to say happy birthday to him.
Thank you, Mister Treasurer.
Happy birthday, everybody, all of you.
You know, you don't have to oblige, I appreciate it.
All right, Councilman, it's your birthday, you up first, go ahead, Councilman Chisholm, this is your birthday, you can go first.
Oh, I have none, thank you all for the birthday wishes, um, I appreciate it, that's, that's really all I have, is just another day we here, continuing to serve. Thank you.
Happy birthday, young man.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Shaw?
Yeah, I too want to say happy birthday to my colleague, and also Mister, Mister Chair, I have, I want to say thanks to the administration for the mayor and his office for helping, um, I had some seniors for the vaccination. Heard that it was a, a definitely a marvelous event, and I know, Mister Chair, that we're going to continue on trying to get everyone in the city vaccinated.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that, and also I wanted to say thank you to uh, Chief Riley and the Road Patrol for the police presence in the southeast, northeast section of the city. I appreciate all that he is doing with the Road Patrol and the Inkster Police Department. And I want to say to all of my block captains, this is that time of year that we're coming out of our homes in the spring and summer, so I just want to encourage my block captains to make sure that you get out your cell phones and your notebooks and your pens, to start jotting down some of these suspicious activities, uh, some of these license plate numbers of these uh, speeders that's going down, up and down the street. I know I have some on Glenwood that just was peeling out uh, just about an hour ago. I know some of my members that's on the line here, um, had heard them in the neighborhood, so I want you to make sure you be vigilant. Uh, we used to have a saying in the block club, if you see something, say something. And to remember that you can call uh, Police Department anonymously, anonymously. And I want to also encourage um, our residents to bag Inkster blue, men and women in blue, bag Inkster blue as they're, as they support our community too. And also, uh, Mister Chair, if uh, we can have some patrol on Glenwood between Inkster and Harrison Street. And that, that's all I have, Mister Chair.
Between Inkster and Harrison, okay. Got you, Councilwoman Watley?
Uh, yes, just one thing, um, reference the water bills, I'm still receiving complaints from residents regarding their water bills. And as if I, I recall, this is how it started back when we had all those other issues. And I don't want to see us become lackadaisical where it's concerned, because it appears that the billing is not consistent, it's just kind of willy-nilly. So if I could talk to someone, I've, you know, gone over and read the policies that are on the um, the website, but it's not necessarily in line with what these people are telling me is going on as far as bills are concerned. Because um, when you're, when you're um, your bills become more, you've had consistent use with actual billing, and then you get an estimated one that's like three times higher than all your actual billings, well, that's gonna cause concern for people. So I would like to figure out some sort of concrete way we can address those situations. Because the last time I was told that we need to call and have the meters chat. I want to know if it's possible, because I understand that you can send a picture of your meter and maybe that'll put you back in line with what they're reading at their location, so just something to appease these people who feel they're being unjustly charged. That's all.
Yeah, very good point, go ahead, uh, Treasurer, I know you want to speak to that.
Yep, uh, Councilwoman, so just uh, with that, I mean, uh, when these occur, we're hoping that, you know, these are just one-off situations. Um, I do know that, you know, given your position, people will reach out to you regarding it. Uh, I do encourage all, uh, all residents that have these questions about their water bills to call us. We will try to take care of them, we will uh, try to figure out what's going on. Um, sometimes it will require someone coming. Um, sometimes it will require someone coming to the house. Uh, I think we know that, you know, at times, some of these meters, they, uh, you know, they have certain upkeep that's required and whatnot. Um, but if, I, I certainly encourage anyone who has questions about their water bill to please, please, please contact our office, um, and we will do what we can to help and try to get things fixed. Um, I don't have a blanket way to say how it will be fixed because it may require different paths to figuring out what's wrong with each bill that you reference.
And that number is three one three five six three seven seven zero four.
Yep, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead. No, finish up.
Uh, three one three five six three seven seven zero four.
And also keep in mind that when these people call, as in Reverend Williams' case with that, they're not always received cordially too. So that's an issue. And a lot of people are not necessarily willing to put themselves out there when they're dealing with the city. So you have that. Like he says, everybody needs to be treated with respect and you shouldn't minimize anybody's complaint when they call in about it.
Certainly understood. I appreciate that.
Okay. Councilwoman, you're done?
Yes.
All right. So you're Councilwoman Washington?
Um, okay, so I just wanted to give a big thank you, um, to the mayor's office as well as Wayne County Health Department and, um, DPS, um, for the water filter distribution. I was able to help in that. Heard a lot of good things about that, um, water filter distribution as well as the vaccines. Just a big thank you as well to Wayne County, um, for administering those vaccines. I've heard a lot of seniors, they're pretty, um, they've been pretty happy about that. And also happy birthday to my colleague, uh, Councilman Steve Chisholm.
All right. Moving right along, Councilman Williams.
Okay, first I'd like to start off, happy birthday, little Stevie. I didn't get off the line yet. Where he at? He in? He on?
Right here. His birthday, he can do whatever he wants.
Right here.
Whatever he is, he's still here.
I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Amen. Okay, uh, since we're getting ready to get out one minute with the mayor, on the mayor, state of the city, there's some things I just want to clear. And I got brother Bivens on the line. Brother Bivens, we sent out a, a big, um, money that's supposed to be spent for the, uh, pumps over there in, uh, my area. Okay, I need you to tell me where you at at that point and when it would be done.
Um, it will be, uh, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
It will be done. It will be done before the end of May. Uh, the pumps are coming in. Um, we had some, um, change orders sent to us by the state. So we are addressing those now and you should see some activity over there towards the end of this month, the beginning of April with the rehab of that pump station.
Okay, uh, about the signs that we were talking about down Callow in, in the area. The signs that we're supposedly putting up, uh, twenty-five miles?
We, we, I, I don't. I need to talk to you offline about that because I know we put some signs up, so I think me and you need to have a conversation about that.
Okay, um, first of all, I'd like to send a shout out also, since we're talking about birthdays. I'd like to send a happy birthday to the oldest man that I know in Inkster, uh, living man in Inkster now, Mr. Luke Lampkin, okay? Just celebrated his birthday, so I wanted to send out a shout out to him and congratulations. Um, Speed Bumps, Mr. Mayor, is that a dead deal or what?
No, sir. I, I, I reached out to.
Look at the man. He's all looking at you.
But I, I.
I'm on, I'm on him all the time about it, so go ahead, go ahead, the man.
Yeah, so, uh, as I communicated to the mayor last week, we did finally get in touch with the state. I sent them the plans and the location we planned on putting them. I'm just waiting on their response to come back. So I gave them the streets that the mayor gave me. I think it was Glenwood, several streets he gave me that I forwarded to the state, so we just waited on them to finalize that.
Amen.
Yeah, but let me say this, that just for point of clarification, Jerome, those streets came from the police department.
Police Department, I'm sorry.
Links for speeding in those areas.
Right.
So we know that the, it's a cost associated with it that we couldn't necessarily afford to pay from the general fund. Um, but we, we found a way to pay for it through the roads fund, but it has to be permanent.
Right.
So, so when we, the, the ones that we can't pay for, um, as a city, uh, block clubs along with different organizations in the community has asked for, um, you know, what the cost would be and if they could pay for them themselves. So we'll be working in conjunction with, with folks, other organizations within the community to get that done.
Yes, sir.
I got one more little thing. When you get to the, go ahead, go ahead, brother Bivens.
Go ahead.
Oh, I have one more thing to say too. Excuse me for cutting you off, Councilman Williams and Mr. Mayor. About the water filters, I need to make this clear. If you receive the filter on the twentieth and twenty-first, please don't show up in my office because we have a list and a record of everybody that received a filter. All the people should be coming to our office, the people that did not receive a filter on that Saturday and Sunday. We would appreciate it. Thank you.
All right.
All right, I'm gonna wrap this up right quick, uh, Mr. Mayor. Basically, and I hope, I, I hope it come out of my mouth the way it should come out. Um, now, for one, when people do wrong in the city, I think we're supposed to prosecute and, and, and look into investments and various things like that when people do wrong. Okay, but you know what? Ironically, I, I watched even members of the council before. We had one guy in the, in the park and recreation department, name, his name was Craig. I'm gonna call his name. Stole, stole a whole lot more money than this Mister, what's it, Legend, Legend? Is that his name? Legend? And nobody prosecuted him whatsoever. They just, they, they, they laid him off. They, they laid him off from the job, dismissed him from the job, and nobody prosecuted him. And there were facts, facts, and everyone know that they were facts. They prosecuted him, but then all of a sudden now, because, uh, you, you come in this one and say, well, we're going to execute him. You won't even give the police chief time to investigate the total, total program, but nobody investigated Craig Lewis when he was in there. Nobody. And they know he stole. That's all I got to say.
All right, Mayor Proton Mauer?
I don't have anything. But happy birthday, Steve, to my colleague. Happy birthday.
All right, I, I, I'll echo that. Happy birthday, Big Steve.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, and just, um, just a few things that was, that was echoed. Um, I'll echo as it relates to, uh, just the staff, outstanding job. I just want to say outstanding job, um, for COVID vaccinations. The county was impressed. Matter of fact, they're using a couple of, of things that we did logistically inside of, of, of the actual recreation center where we had the legacy group there with us checking people's, uh, blood pressure and things of that nature and then, you know, observing those folks leaving out. It's one of the things that they're going to implement, taking it from Inkster. I know we've been getting a lot of calls from people asking us, when are we going to have more vaccinations? Where they are forthcoming, we're just waiting for the county again to let us know when those dates will be. I've been asked a question if they can go to other communities. At this point, you cannot, but we are working with other communities just to help and see what we can do in order to hopefully come together in a big, a, a bigger venue to be able to serve all of our citizens together. So, um, we will be sending out another notification here soon as it relates to COVID vaccinations. Hats off again to Jerome, his staff and everything that they're doing with the water filters. It's excellent job, excellent job. And just for all, just for you that, that need the information, we will have some information posted as it relates to, um, again, for, um, I want to say, I will always want to call him officer, uh, just keep calling him officer, but, uh, Deputy Chief Henry Crump Jr., he was actually a good friend of mine and actually is kind of, it's kind of tough, but, um, as relates to him, uh, he'll be laid out at Opi Funeral Home on this coming Friday for visitation for all of you that want to pay your respects to him. And lastly, Reverend Williams, you got your, your request has been answered after talking to, um, the administration as it relates to the state of the city. I don't want to disappoint anybody. I know everybody's excited about the state of our city, but we need to have our financials in order first. So as, um, the treasurer said, uh, earlier on tonight, that we'll be meeting with the council on the twenty-second, that week of the twenty-second. We'll deliver the state of the city after that. So we're going to look at a hard date of April the seventh to deliver our state of the city because one of the major components of the city is finances. And without finances, it just don't work. So I would, it, it, it would be, if, if I came out with the state of the city next week and, and the treasurer doesn't have all the information that he needs for me, we, it just doesn't make sense. So, so we're going to move that date to April the seventh. Also too, just extend it to the council as well because I believe this is an opportunity for us to market our beautiful city. Um, a one minute, what you got going on in your district, what you like to see in your district. And you say two minutes, two, 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 what you got to understand that two minutes adds up to, you know, a whole bunch of minutes. So we want to keep the audience, this body, get two minutes if you need two minutes. And we'll work, we'll work it out from there because it's very important for us to really, you know, show off what we're doing within our community. We need to be the good news in our community. And I believe that this is an opportunity for us to put something out that will really define the direction that we're headed in, which is up. No matter what anybody else is saying, we're going in the right direction. I love the city of Inkster. I'm so proud to be able to serve as your mayor. I'm looking forward to April seventh to put it all before you and the direction that we headed in. Now, let me say right off, springtime is here. We're looking for a clean, safe and accessible Inkster. We will have some dates posted as it relates to our spring clean Inkster. We're going to actually go a step further with the help of Habitat for Humanity and the Nation of Islam. We're looking to bring together those groups and bring out about five hundred volunteers to do a Inkster city makeover. We're going to look at identifying the areas within each of our districts, uh, the six districts that we have within our city and look at, um, whether we're going to tear down a home or actually build up a home. Working with Habitat for Humanity, we should be able to accomplish that and the Nation of Islam is supporting us in that effort. So I'm asking that all of you, um, just put up your radar for that, but right now you can get out on your curve and keep it clean. That's what we want to do. We want to help to keep our community clean. When it's a clean community, it's a safer community. So with that being said, I ask. I'm sorry?
I wanted to say one thing before you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, before you ended, I, I felt you were getting ready to end, were you?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify something because I listen to people all the time talking about things proper and in order. And I just want to make a correction on what Reverend Williams said. The person he was talking about, Craig, was fired immediately. A report was made and it was turned over to the prosecutor's office. They declined to prosecute him. There was no internal decision made where this man was concerned. And you can check that out for yourself.
I appreciate that point of clarification. I think that, uh, as, as we move forward again, we're just moving right along. So let's move along and move forward in everything that we're doing.
That's fine, but just keeping, keeping stuff even, you know, keeping stuff correct.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
We thank you, we thank you for that, Councilwoman Wiley.
All right, not a problem.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn.
It's Steve's birthday. We're getting off of his, his support.
Support, support, support.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Have a good night. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.